Okay, hello, everybody. Thank you for joining us today. Hopefully, folks online can hear us. If not, please let us know. Welcome to the MTP work session. So a real quick rundown of what we'll do today. We'll have a presentation from the Safe Pursuit Highway Project Team. They'll go through that presentation. It's an opportunity to ask questions, that kind of stuff. After we're done there, there'll be a discussion with DOT about the funding of the cost increase for this project and the MTP. And then we'll kind of finish up with any final questions or comments that people have. Please remember, this is an opportunity for the committee members, both in person and online, to get their questions answered prior to the TAC meeting tomorrow and the Policy Committee meeting in two weeks, where staff is asking for direction, guidance from the committees on how to move forward with the MTP related to the Safe Pursuit Highway Project. So with that, we can go ahead and turn it on over to the project team if you guys are ready. Oh, really quick, sorry, before you begin, I have to put somebody on a spotlight here because it is their first time here. We do have a new member of the TAC, Elisa Bab is joining us. So welcome her. We'll talk more at the TAC meeting, so not too much on the spotlight now. But just in case anybody has any questions, she's the new planning director here at the municipality bench. Go ahead, thank you.
Please stand up here.
You guys can do whatever you want. Our video camera is trying to encompass as much of the room as possible. Most of the people up here, where Melinda and I probably will not be seen, but everybody else should.
Do you want to come sit in these chairs?
Sure.
I'll get started. So first of all, thanks for letting us be here and present on behalf of the Stewart Highway Project. We put together a quick 15-minute overview and then we can get to some questions. I don't know who's advancing the slides, but thank you very much.
You want them to say their names?
Yeah, thank you. Quick introductions. My name is Chris Hughes, I'm with HDR. We're contracted to work on this project. Our team is made up of three action teams. Engineering Action Team, a Communications Action Team, and an Environmental Action Team. My role on the project is kind of overseeing all of HDR's team for this environmental document.
And I'm Catherine Wood, also with HDR, and I am the Communications Team Lead.
Quick overview of the project. Stewart Highway 98 to 98 and a half, actually, to 118, those limits. For awareness, 98 and a half is south of Byrd, commonly known as Byrd Point. I'm sorry, Byrd Flats. That's in a section where we have a southbound passing lane and a northbound passing lane. Just where the railroad years ago was flipped over to the water side, that's the southern end. On the northern end is Rabbit Creek Interchange is about mile post 118. So that's where we're back in the urban section of the Stewart Highway and it's fully divided, four-lane roadway. Throughout the entire corridor, you know, fairly mountainous, mostly on the uphill side. You have the highway were essentially two-lane throughout, except for a little bit on the southern end of Byrd. And then the railroad is all on the water side, just for reference, in case you haven't driven there in a while. This map kind of shows the AMAT's boundary on there, just for reference. The shaded area is sort of the current boundary and the dotted green line is proposed new boundary. A little hard to see the difference, but if you look closely, you can see the differences there. And then the last thing to mention, the hotspots on there throughout the kind of shaded red and orange and blue. A lot of that is just the crash history that we're working with over the over the five-year span of crash history we're working with, kind of hotspots. Sort of there to show that it's not like one curve or one area or one spot of concern. We really see a lot of crash history throughout the entire corridor. And so that's one of the reasons why we're looking at this corridor. We can go to the next. So, you know, what we're balancing. The green line that kind of steps there on the water, that's actually the boundary of Chugatch State Park. So it's, this entire facility is sort of located within the park. So you have park on the uphill side and park on the water side. There's cutouts there in Byrd and in Indian, of course. So much of this project is within the park. On the very northern edge at Potter Marsh, the park does end there and that becomes the refuge at Potter Marsh. Very mountainous areas, especially kind of a windy corner. And Beluga Point stuff, you can see the purple lines are on there are all the trails within the park. So there's a lot of trailhead access, recreational use. And then, you know, the last thing I'd mention is the orange shaded area that's turning an arm. Certainly wetlands of the US ocean. But lastly, it's Beluga, critical Beluga whale habitat as well. It's all considered critical habitat. So there's a lot of pieces that we're kind of balancing here in a really tight corridor. Yeah, take that, get everything. Where we are in the process, so we started this back in January in '23. So we're approaching two years in the process focused on an environmental document. We've had numerous presentations. We've been working through design concepts. We've been drafting the EA most recently, sort of focused on getting a draft document into the DOT's hands to review at the end of the year of 2024. There'll be some review process, there'll be a public draft that goes out for public review, the standard cycles that happen. That process is probably about six to eight months. So that puts that final EA, final environmental document to that kind of July, August timeframe. And we would move on to designing construction of different pieces then. Let's talk about a little bit about what we've done. So this is the purpose and need for the project. It is a, it is a safety corridor. The focus is to improve safety, traffic operations, access management, and that multimodal. The four needs of the project, so there's actually, these most recently have been consolidated into three. But the first one, reduce crash rates and crash severity. That's the, one of the biggest focuses of the project of it being a safety corridor. It's been a safety corridor for almost 20 years now. So we're really focused on how do we reduce crash rates and crash severity. The second two have been kind of consolidated into one need, just because there's some overlap. Mobility has a lot to do with some different uses in the corridor and some non non vehicular uses. So we actually have a separated pathway for the entire 20-mile corridor with all of our design concepts. On the southern end, it sort of connects into the existing Byrd to Gird Trail or Indian to Gird Trail. But for the remainder to the north, it's a separated paved pathway from the, from the facility and all the design concepts. Reliability is really focused on the fact that this is the only roadway south to the Kenai or to Girdwood, to Whittier, of course. And when an incident does occur, that highway can be closed for, you know, many hours at a time, causing real problems. So the focus on finding ways to ensure it's open, it's such a vital connection for that area, whether it's getting to town for hospital visits or flights or that kind of thing. Reliability becomes a really large concern for a piece of the NHS with no alternative route. And then that last one is the large crux of the project, right? Safely accommodate the mixed uses of the corridor. Lot of recreational access points, lot of local use, a lot of tourism use in the summer to either access trails or access viewpoints. And then secondly, you have a lot of people traveling to the Kenai or a lot of tourist traffic traveling to Whittier. So there's a lot of, there's actually a lot of freight movement heading to the Kenai as well. So there's a lot of people just on the through side versus a lot of the local use access. Let's go to the next one. Okay, so Catherine's going to talk a little bit about some of our connection with the stakeholders in the area.
Yeah, so when DOT decided to step back and take a whole corridor look at this 20-mile segment, it was because there are a lot of key stakeholders who are interested, have jurisdiction throughout that whole area. And so the thought was, instead of doing environmental and on smaller pieces, let's do it holistically for the whole corridor. Because the permitting issues are going to be the same. The Chugatch State Park issues are going to be the same, et cetera. Also, there's a lot of public interest in this project. So we have convened what we're calling the Stakeholder Working Group. And it has a representative of each of the groups that are listed here that we felt had either some insight into different uses of the corridor or who had agency jurisdiction over the corridor. And we brought them all together to the same table. And we have been meeting with them, we just met with them last month for our 11th meeting since the start of the project to workshop through the concept ideas that we have. We've taken them through draft purpose and need, understanding existing conditions, and encouraged a dialogue because there's also a lot of overlapping, I don't want to say conflicting, sometimes conflicting, but overlapping uses of this same corridor. And so it's been a really great opportunity for stakeholders to hear other perspectives and to understand the complexity of what's, what's going on there. So that's been, that's been a good process. We did a survey of the group a few months back and got some really positive feedback that the working group had felt like it was a good use of time, really appreciated the transparency of information, and appreciated kind of being invited behind the curtain of project development, so to speak, to let them look at early ideas before everything is fully baked. Another thing that we have done is a broad public opinion survey. And these are just, these are just two highlights of a holistic public engagement strategy. But early on, we had this sort of a hunch that people felt that safety was an issue in the corridor. But we didn't have any data to back that up other than anecdotal. And so we did, we hired a third party to do a telephone survey of Anchorage. And we included Kenai and Matu because it's a regional corridor as well to ask folks some of these questions, what they thought about the project, what they thought about the highway. And we actually had the Stakeholder Working Group review those questions and tweak them before we sent the survey out. And, you know, the key takeaway is where that most South Central residents are using this highway pretty frequently. The highway is viewed as hazardous and people do feel like improving safety on the highway is a good idea and should be a priority. And over 80% rated improving the Stewart Highway as either a medium or high priority. And then kind of when we asked them, well, what do you think should be done in that? And the top things they mentioned were rock and ice fall mitigation and then adding additional lanes. So if you go to the next slide, the one other, we were also trying to tease apart, like, do people think this is worth it? Because it's a high-cost project and it will be complicated to build it. And it will be built over many phases, right? And so we asked them a broad question about, you know, do you think this is going to be worth it for the high costs? And, you know, short term, it was roughly a 10-year period inconvenience. And so these were the results that we got. And so that was, it was heartening, I think, to see that the broader public, just at a, you know, on a survey level, felt like, yeah, this is a good project to keep moving forward. These are some renderings that we have put together for our last meeting because there were some questions, folks, about if you could really make room for additional lanes or highway improvements or a pathway in this corridor. Because it's, it's really tight topographically. And we wanted to show people what that might look like. So the one on the top left is a viewpoint of roughly around Indian, what it would look like if you had a divided highway. And then we figured out you would need to provide, you need to keep providing access to that community. So there would be a frontage road there. The one on the top right shows what the project might look like from the perspective of a pathway user. And I think this one is just south of Beluga. On the bottom, you have two renderings there that show. On the right, it shows what it currently looks like at Potter Marsh. And on the left, it shows what it looks like, could you get in, how could you get in extra lanes? And then we also have a pathway there added along the marsh side. And here, you know, in this kind of area, we would be looking at moving the railroad out into the water to make room for those improvements. But also, you can see here that there's a barrier in between those two lanes of traffic going in each direction as opposed to a median. And we've looked at that, those kinds of treatments throughout. And there's some places where there's room, it's safer to have a median. Where there's not room, we would potentially be looking at, we would be looking at a barrier. So just kind of, a picture is worth a thousand words.
I always love a slide with no words and only pictures. So a little bit of some questions that came up, we put some things together and wanted to present this. We've been just starting the process of looking at different sections within the corridor. As we mentioned, this is a corridor-wide environmental document. It would be delivered in different phases, different sections, different projects. And so we've started to do that in a couple of different manners. To start out, one of the questions that came up is how much of this project is within that AMAT's boundary? You can see those numbers, 360, 266, and the current boundary. Those are kind of rough estimates, taking what we know and kind of looking at it on a per-mile segment when we get into the sections that are within the AMAT's boundary. That total program cost, you know, as we start to look at the whole thing, gets into that $1.3 billion mark at the moment. When I'm talking about funding strategies, so that, that overall number can change a lot through time. And there's different ways to implement the project. We recently held a delivery workshop to try to figure out how you would deliver this entire corridor. And we're looking at it from a few different angles. For instance, you know, maybe more traditionally, you might look at applying $75 million per year to the corridor. Well, when you do that, you start to break this up into different segments and say, what can we, you know, what are the different segments that get built? How long does it take? And another scenario, we've looked at saying, well, what if we put $150 million into the corridor a year, for instance? Obviously, that would take less time. We've also started to look at which segments might be built first or second or third. In Indian, there's been some recent construction, the bridge over Indian Creek. There's been a bunch of pathway improvements. You might not build that section first, so you get a little bit more life out of that infrastructure that's, that's been more recently constructed. We also look at areas that have been analyzed longer, you know, that corner, windy, the curve of windy corner has been analyzed for a long time. It's probably at a state that's, that's better prepared to move forward. Sometimes the permits, the permit timeline drives which section might go first. So we're just starting to dive into this and figure out which scenarios, which order of operations sort of make the most sense. The last thing there, you know, we've applied for two different grants on this project during our timeframe working on it. We've been looking at different bonding ideas. We've been looking at different loan ideas. And then, and then even looking at opportunities where partnering with the railroad through FRA grants or the Federal Railroad Administration grants, where you're making safety improvements to the railroad, but you're also affecting the highway improvements. And is that a funding strategy? So trying to look at a lot of different funding strategies on how you develop this, this entire corridor. And that's sort of where we're at now, starting to look at that as we finalize the EA. So, you know, a couple of things on that, you know, it's, it's a program, not a project, right? It's 20 miles and it might end up being six or seven projects or eight projects, eight different contracts, eight different contractors. There might be a spot where there's two contractors working in the corridor at the same time. Or, or maybe not. I think that that's a function of as the, as the project gets further developed, we start to refine how that delivery takes shape. It is, it's a question that's come up. It's always been a federal highway, NHS-funded project, federal highway funds. And then there's a, I know there's a lot of, we can get into these questions between AMAT's funding or DOT funding and it's in the tip and it's in the stiff. But it's a, I don't think the intention has ever been to change the AMAT's allocation to fund this project. It's always been focused as an NHS facility funded with FHWA funds.
Yeah, and, you know, there's a whole bunch of information on our website with all our past public meetings. There's a map that you can scroll through and look at the improvements in different locations if you want to get really, you know, granular in terms of what we've been looking at. Everybody's invited to sign up for our notices for when we have new information. But the next real major public engagement opportunity will be when the draft EA is published sometime in the spring. There'll be a formal 30-day review period, et cetera. That, that's it. That's what we prepare for you.
Great, thank you. Okay, committee members, do you have questions?
The survey that you put out, I'm curious, you used the language of the public was in favor of doing the project despite the high costs. What was the question? Was the number in billions presented during that survey or was it just high cost?
I think we just said high cost and it's got the exact wording in their report that's online. At that point in the, in time, we didn't have an updated cost estimate.
What is your opinion if the number would have been presented in the survey? Do you have any gauge on that?
I don't, yeah. It's hard to, to know.
Actually, I have a question to sort of tag on the end of that. And part of this question, I think, is because I'm new to the project or the program. I thought I had seen a number floating around in the stiff or somewhere that it was, the cost of this was closer to 2.4 billion. Am I, I'm probably mistaken in that.
That seems.
Does seem high.
I don't, I don't have any familiarity with that.
Okay, well, then I must have been mistaken, so, yeah.
Yeah, there's there's different things, you know, when you try to come up with a number, there's different risks. We actually, before we finalize the document, there's even a risk analysis that we do to look at cost versus the risks that are still outstanding on the job. And that really produces a range of costs. I don't think it ever gets into that higher number.
That seemed pretty extreme in that, I wanted to add.
Yeah, no, fair question. And as we look at those risks, I mean, one of the things that that tool does, sort of required by FHWA, is to say, well, those risks, well, it's, in project development, let's make sure we get those taken out so they're not pushing the costs or the schedule. It's actually cost and schedule. So some of those might be, we're lacking geotechnical information and that apply, that really affects the number we're coming, well, let's get some geotechnical field data, for instance. So that, that, I'm just, my, my point is that that effort has produced a range, but it's never gotten to that level, I don't think. So even, even with all those risks added in.
Okay.
I have a question related to the survey. Do you know what part of Anchorage responded? Do you know, like?
It was the whole Anchorage Bowl. So it was a broad-based, can't remember, we can see how many recipients it actually was.
People were, were called.
So, and they, and they intentionally spread it out so that it wasn't hitting just one specific area.
So it called, it was a random calling of residents, it wasn't a self-selected.
Correct.
Response.
No.
And, and so pretty much everyone respond or if we're given the opportunity to respond. I mean, I, I live on South Side, so I, I'm on this corridor quite a bit. But I, I don't hardly use the North Side exit out of town. So I imagine those on the North Side probably aren't using this as much as those on the South Side. So it just, knowing and understanding that self-selection happens with surveys just makes me wonder.
Sure.
Can those, can that accurately be said to say that this really serves that much of Anchorage residents?
I think the, the first question they asked was, do you, do you drive on the highway? And if they said no, then it was like, okay, sure, we're going to move on to the next person. Because you're not going to be able to give us any feedback on like, well, do you, do you feel like it's a safe facility? Do you feel like?
Move on to the next person or so they didn't answer any of the rest of the questions?
So they didn't answer the questions. If they was, do you drive the highway? And if the answer was no, then they didn't ask them the questions. Because they're all specific questions about, like, prioritizing improvements and, yeah, that's sort of.
So just to clarify, none of those responses are from people that didn't drive the highway? If they said no, then, so this is just those anywhere throughout Anchorage that drive it?
And Matu and Kenai.
But not anyone throughout Anchorage who said no?
Correct.
Do we know what percentage said no from those phone calls?
I don't know, actually. We could find out.
Yeah, it seems like it creates a bias. Is that what you're?
Right.
Yeah.
And I, I mean, I raise it because basically at a cost of $316 million within AMATs and $1.3 billion total, that's like over, I mean, even just in AMATs, it's $1,000 a person that we would be spending on this, which, you know, that's, that's not, not chump change. And the impact that it has toward that funding can't be available for other high needs is, you know, I would love if we didn't have competing interests to do something amazing for that section. Is this the right thing? I don't know. But just that question of priorities is, is a big one for me. And so maybe along that line, the other question I would have is, I would like.
Can I, I just had one thought that, before you ask your question, maybe, before we get off track is, one thought about this corridor is that, I know it's so much per person, but I think time component is important in there, right? Like, it's not, we're going to go spend $1.3 billion and do a project till it's done tomorrow for the next three years or something. It might take 10 years, it might take 15 years, it might take 20 years to build this entire thing out. So the money we're spending is over a long period of time on a bunch of projects that all provide some benefit within the corridor. And I, I've sort of made this akin to, there was an EA done on the Stewart Highway in 2006 from Rabbit Creek to 36th Avenue, and that was kind of a corridor EA. And if you look at the section of the Stewart Highway in town, there's been multiple projects that have come out of that. Uter to Dowling, Dowling to Diamond, there's a diamond to O'Malley, I think, that's been working on. And so it's a, it's been a slow kind of upgrade of the existing facility, all under one environmental document. Now, I don't know what the costs were for that, but the, the point being that it's, it's a large, those are all large projects that are done over a long period of time. And it's similar in that sense, I just think that the, I agree, the, the price is overwhelming a little bit. But the, the 20-mile aspect and the long timeframe, I think, is important to remember because it's not one project that's happening today that doesn't, that means that we're not opening up the door for a bunch of other stuff. It's a bunch of smaller projects that are happening through time, I think. So there, that, that ability to balance may be there a little bit more, I guess.
I mean, the other comment to that is, it's basically 20 years of other projects that we just don't get to do because of how high of a cost this is that absorbs so much funding.
Yeah, yeah, fair, yeah, that prioritization is.
So one question with, with it, I guess the direct question is, whose priority is this project? Like, why is this one getting so much attention?
I don't know, that's something that we on the project team can answer.
I can speak to that. This is the state of Alaska, right? We.
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm Lauren Little, I'm the chief engineer of Alaska DOT. We, we're tasked with balancing a lot of different things, right? Our maintenance costs, congestion on the interstate highway system, mobility issues, safety issues. There's a lot of things that we're tackling with various different projects. And so in any given year, you know, you're going to see projects that prioritize pavement condition as well as projects that deal with things like the safety corridor. You know, we've been focused on the park safety corridor, the KNEC corridor. This is the last one. And we've shown a systematic targeting of these as the state of Alaska as a prioritization of getting, getting these resolved, in particular on our interstate pilot, also even K2B, which is, I believe, still NHS, but not interstate. So, you know, we're always balancing all of those things. And that's where what Chris is getting to, one of the things, you know, that we in the Commissioner's office talked early on is, and we had similar conversation on the Sterling Highway to the Landing Bypass Project too, right? Because that was a very high-dollar investment. It is, you know, this can't be the only thing we're doing, right? Anything we're doing, we need to be balancing all of those things across the program. So one of the things we tasked HDR early on with and. So one of the things we tasked HBR early on with, and, and quite frankly, these long corridor projects lend themselves really well to is how do we break this thing up so that, you know, roughly hundred fifty million over on three years spit maybe, or you know, a couple of years, so that there's still plenty of program for all of the other things that are competing. And we have a really good track record of breaking these big corridor projects up. You know, I've been manager for thirty or forty miles on the parks, on the Dalton, and, and we strategically just break those up year by year to get meaningful infrastructure out there to save crash costs, maintenance costs. We're not doing them all at once because these corridors will defend themselves well to breaking them up into components. We may have a year or maybe we do fifteen billion and it's mostly mitigation, you know, like the railroad concept there is a little point. Right? There's lots of components to this that, that allow us to distribute that individual project in that group.
Yeah, the urban safety corridor, or not urban safety, but the safety corridor I can see being a key factor of why there's priority. And I guess being involved and, and seeing all the different projects that we could have going on in Anchorage and knowing that AMATS projects and Anchorage projects like don't get as much staff attention. You know, there's from what I've heard, there's just a lot that we could be doing in Anchorage that I would love to see happening in Anchorage. And so to hear that this one is getting so much attention and getting so much money and to see a lot more in Anchorage, like not getting attention. I mean, in the Vision Zero Working Group that we had, Central Region came with like lots of great ideas. And it sounds like that the thing that's going to restrict the implementation of it is just having staffing and like resources and really making it happen. So if all of those things were getting the attention and, and could happen because there was really clear prioritization of them, it'd be a lot easier to swallow something like this with, with how much money this is going to be taking, how much attention. So I guess that's part of where I'm coming from on it is how do we prioritize our, our limited resources? And can more be shown that that it's not just getting out of Anchorage, but it's also Anchorage is a priority too.
And those are great points. Partly why we use a little bit of delivery on this, right? We're trying to minimize the burden on regional resources so they can do the important work. You know, that's still left, right? Every, there's a lot of important work to be done. And so this model resource, some people from other regions, at the time, my first involvement in this, I was the, we're the chief in model region coming in. So, you know, we tried to, we tried to pull resources from elsewhere so that regional resources can stay committed to their, their program, their bread and butter. You know, we're, we're working at a statewide level to try to support the regions better across the board, provide resources, provide tools so that they can be delivering that important work. And that's not just a sound thing. This is really something that we're tackling at commissioner's office level of how do we support these? How do we resource these? You know, the AGC meeting today, we talked about the importance of the AMATS program in particular, right? Some of, some of the, the money that was available in orchestral distribution was tied to your you know, community size. And so we need to really prioritize and ramp up our delivery here in this area for a lot of reasons. So that is, that is something being talked about at, at very high levels and very high.
So our additional staff getting talked about added to Central Region to help carry forward many of the projects that have been identified and available funding for.
I don't know that we're talking about additional like dedicated positions to Central Region, but we're doing a lot more cross-regional collaboration. Right? Where we have ball side staff across South Coast, Northern, Central, and then even now in statewide office, we have folks in the standards group that have project delivered and project management experience that we can start you know, adding components to that and pull it out and make sure that they get solutions.
Sean, are you trying to say something?
I was, I was coughing, but I have my hand up anyway.
I stopped both, I heard both, yeah.
I can go if you're ready for me. I just have a couple of thoughts and maybe a, a couple of questions that glad that you brought up that it was a designated safety corridor. And I'm sorry if I missed it, but maybe the project staff could speak to I don't know, the, the rate of fatal and serious injury crashes in that corridor? I don't know if you have that information with you, but I think that could add some value. And I'm just going to go through my list here, if that's okay. To Brad's comment, you know, this is a, this project's being built, developed with our, we call it our T, Transportation X model, which is Lauren mentioned is we draw from resources from outside the region, but really in this, on this project, and we're relying pretty heavily on HDR staff. I don't know, besides myself, I don't know anybody else that puts much time into that project. So I don't, that's not going to take away staff time from those projects. You're right, Brad. I mean, that's a, a, I've said it before that our number one priority right now is that Vision Zero team. And we're going to dedicate the staff that we need to, to get those projects delivered. But I don't think this project draws from the staff resources anyway. It certainly is an expensive project. That's a statement, I guess. So if I look at, you know, if I look at the, the STIP that we amendment that we just submitted, there's a STIP need ID that's one, two, six, four, one, which is the parent project. And under that project, there is six construction projects that fall out of that. The total here rolls up to one point five. If I look back to the MTP, which I think we signed in spring last year, the AMATS MTP, the estimate was seven hundred million. And of which I think we carried thirteen percent from memory for the portion or the piece that's within the AMATS boundary. Maybe, Chris, could you speak to that? I think it's a CRS A, the, the Risk Schedule Analysis and speak about, you know, why that estimate went up? And, you know, that a lot of it's based on the year of expenditure and I, I guess I'll let you do that part of it. But that's, that's all I have for now.
I'll start with your first part and then I'll come back to the CSRA, that the safety corridor. In two thousand and six, this was named as a designated safety corridor. Every three years, they review crash history for a safety corridor in the, in the sense of saying, should this still be a safety corridor, right? They look at crash rates, serious and, and, uh, serious injury and fatality crash rates, and how do they compare to what is expected for a, for a facility of this type? There's lots of improvements that happen within this corridor. I think there's well over a hundred million dollars that's been spent since two thousand and six within this corridor. And those include things like centerline rumble strips, more enforcement, double fines, ad campaigns. There's a lot of highway safety improvement projects that happen in the corridor. Little things along those lines. And so there's a review that's done every three years to say, have those fixes been enough to fix the problem? And I, I really look at those as like, you know, was it a ban, was it a small, single curve that we addressed? For instance, near Indian, there was a pullout on the water side. That's been removed and replaced with a guardrail because of the visual sight areas were really poor. Did that fix the problem in the corridor? For instance, it's remained a safety corridor for eighteen years. The, the serious and injury crashes have gone down. I want to say forty to fifty percent, I'm talking off the top of my head. The fatalities have increased two percent over the eighteen year time period. So the fatalities have not decreased, even with those improvements over the long term. And so what we've kind of noticed is, you know, these, these small project fixes to address problem areas aren't fixing the problem. What's going to fix the problem is a real project. This is slated right now. There's another, the KGB safety corridor designation is going to go away. There's one between Sterling and Soldatna. That's going out right now in an alternate delivery project that's ahead of schedule of this one. And so as that gets completed, this will be the last designated safety corridor in the state. So to your point, Lauren, of a concerted effort on safety corridors, this becomes the last one remaining as far as where we are in the cycle of project development. So hopefully that helps a little bit with the history of, of, of safety corridors and that importance. On the CSRA, some of those early estimates, you know, that seven hundred million or whatever, some of those early estimates, in two thousand and eighteen, there was a reconnaissance report done on this corridor. And I think some of the numbers that ended up in the may have come from that. I'm not sure where those early numbers came from. When we picked this up in two thousand and twenty-three and revised what this corridor might look like and cost estimates after COVID and stuff. I think that that's when our prices have escalated. That CSRA is an effort that's, I don't remember those numbers, but there's a, that's the range I was talking about where you start to say you start to look at year of expenditure numbers, you start to look at adding risk, what is the there's different percentiles of costs. There are a lot of different costs that I look at. We did it, we did a really rough one in February this past year. And it was just to get an idea so we could do some initial planning. The, the plan is, as we develop our proposed action that's moving forward into the document, and we've done a little bit more refinement of that, to update that cost risk analysis to look at what are the risks that are driving the costs? And again, that looks at the whole corridor, costs for the entire corridor. I do think that is different than how you implement the project. That's a little bit why we look at a, a cost seventy-five or hundred fifty, whatever have you dollar range per year to apply to the corridor, which might end up being numerous small projects. I don't know if that gets to where you were asking, Sean, or not.
Yeah, I, I think it does. The point being that, again, like you said, it's a, it's a program, it's not a project. We could be looking at twenty years of, of smaller projects. The definition in the, in the STIP puts, puts most of the majority of that money outside of the twenty-four to twenty-seven STIP. So, yeah, there's, there's time to, to I, I suspect that it's going to be an alternative delivery contract that we do that with. And, and part of that will be relying on the contractor to help us break that down into kind of affordable chunks there. But I don't know if that's my vision. I don't think we're really there yet. But no, I think that, that helped me anyway. Thanks, Chris.
Some questions. I'm glad that you talked about some of the things that have been done in the past, including the rumble strips and enforcement. I'm just wondering, when you're looking at the EA, what types of alternatives did you look at besides two lanes in each direction? Had you looked at any delineators in the middle just to provide a little bit of a barrier separation? Even if it's not very physical, but just something to enforce that there's delineation, any type of strategic pullouts? You know, like you said, you removed one pullout that was causing problems, but if there was other opportunities to have just more strategic pullouts, whether that's allowing for emergency services or broken down cars or viewing opportunities for recreation. I just want to make sure that you didn't go straight to one option and then conveyed that. My other question is, when you did the polling with the, a public opinion, what timeframe did you have that duration open for? Was it a long extended period? Was it thirty days? Just give me a sense of how long? Because a lot of things that are really important, as important as, as it is, we have these minimums where we check the box and say, okay, we asked the public, we agreed with them, we met the thirty day and we closed it and we did our jobs and we're moving on. For something this important, I want to make sure that you engage with them with options and then found out what kind of period that you interacted to address and find out what people thought about options instead of just this configuration.
Want to go first or second?
Well, I, I can weigh in on, on the, the survey was done last year. We have had, not just the stakeholder working, so I was just kind of hitting the, the big things that were different from the usual public outreach campaign. So we've had a series of public meetings as well, where we have talked about some of the alternatives, which Chris is going to talk about a little bit more, but to say, but to share. So in that web mapper, there is currently a three lane alternative. So like alternate passing lanes we looked at. We looked at two lanes in each separate, like not separated. Then we looked at it divided. We also looked at, where do you locate it? What if you move everything towards the water side? What's that going to do to your costs and impacts? What if you move everything towards the mountainside? What's that going to do to your costs and impacts? We looked at, you know, do you take the railroad and move it inside at a very high level? So we've been doing a lot of concept analysis. We looked, we thought about, can you do a three lane and have one lane that switches like you see in Colorado some places where like at nighttime it's going out and then during the daytime it's coming in. We've been like trying to look at all those things to see, is there any way to improve that foundational safety concern without doing the four lane divided? Because a lot of stakeholders were like, do you really need to do that? And, and the traffic, you know, analysis that we're looking at is saying, okay, well, number one, the, the first thing you can really do is so it's got to be divided because of the head-on crashes are the ones that are so severe.
Yeah, the, just, I kind of like to say the circuitous nature of this section, right? When you get south of Byrd, you have a lot more. It's less curvy, to be simple, right? You get towards Girdwood, it's sort of, your photography is a little bit less. But in this section from Anchorage to Byrd, you're really in and out of those mountains. And so there, there's an entire safety analysis that's been done and it's looked at even predictive crash rates based on on traffic and, you know, fundamentally splitting the two lanes, northbound and southbound, has so much benefit from a severe and fatal injury crash standpoint. And if that becomes with a median, if that becomes with a barrier, but physical separation more than just like a delineator, because that doesn't really keep any cars from traveling across and getting into the head-on collisions. That becomes fundamental. When we get past that component of it, I want to get to your intersections. When we get past that component, then Catherine's right, you know, is it two lane? Is it three lane? Is it alternate passing? One of the biggest things we've run into is that passing is key because of the platooning effect or the frustration that happens. What happens is people start to get frustrated and they start to make improper maneuvers, unsafe maneuvers, because they've been either traveling from the Keenai for three hours and they're frustrated in general, or they're frustrated to get down to go dip netting or what have you. And so the, 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 the benefit of the, the four lane starts to step into play there. There's some maintenance benefits. When you get to how, when you get to building with four lanes versus two, there's a reliability component. When there is an incident to allow more lanes to be open, there's a constructability element of building two lanes and then moving the traffic that's out there to the other two until you're finished and then moving them back to the other side. There's a maintenance after construction. If you're in a single lane scenario where you want to go restripe or build a pot, you know, replace some potholes or something. If you're doing that in a one lane section, you're sort of in a closure, right? We've heard a lot from maintenance of the difficulties associated with that. You're in like a rolling closure at that point. So there's been a lot of different scenarios that I've gone through to try to figure out what makes sense in this corridor. The, the, but the pullouts, I want to get to the pullouts and the intersections you were talking about. Another thing that really relates to the safety is the movements onto and off of the facility, the access piece, right? Because a lot of people are making left turns onto this facility and they do they have visibility or do they not? And does somebody see them coming? And so there has been a focused effort to remove those access points. But when I say remove, I say, what I mean to say is replace, you know, the, the whatever it is, forty, fifty, sixty, hundreds of access points with designated improved, you know, fundamentally, much better access points. And so it's really interesting. When you look at this corridor and you say, where do people want to go? And there's all these recreational spots and you say Potter Valley Road and Potter Trailhead and then McHugh Creek and then Beluga and then Rainbow and then Windy Corner and then you're in India. And when you lay it on the map, they're actually are dividing, they actually divide up that section pretty well. The other piece we've looked at in talking with APD is like, what do you need for openings if we're going to divide this facility, right? So that you can travel and turn around and go back the other way to get to an incident. And they want about two mile sections or so before they have that opening. We're pretty close to that just with those access points. And so our focus has been to say, those access points that are used the most, that have the most volume, the most interest in, in the public. And so our focus has been to say, those access points that are used the most, that have the most volume, the most interest in, in the public wants to get to. Let's provide safer deceleration lanes or let's make sure we have visible areas where we can see cars coming. Let's make those areas that, that you're more comfortable turning into, rather than having, you know, you're around this blind curve and somebody's entering the highway and you didn't see them coming. Or an Indian road is a very skewed intersection. Let's not have that super skewed intersection where you're slamming on the brakes and you're worried about somebody behind you, that kind of thing. So let's, let's focus on having good access points, fewer, absolutely fewer, but the ones we have being uh better designed.
I will say too, the, the pullout question, both the railroad and TruGash State Park don't want more pullouts. Um, because the railroad says, you know, people stop there and then they trespass on the railroad, which is a very unsafe condition from their perspective. Um, and TruGash State Park has found that many of the pullouts that aren't there, people kind of like set up camp there and it becomes a really, really a headache for them. Um, and so we've been actually trying to get rid of the pullouts in favor of making these better, better spots.
And just big picture on the whole public process, we didn't start with here's your four lane divided highway. We started with here's the project, here's what we think the purpose and need. Here's, here's why we think this project should exist. Um, and we worked through that both with the Stakeholder Working Group and the public over a pretty robust time period, just getting that purpose and need statement really dialed in so that, that we had a real clear um, purpose of what we were, what we needed to focus on to improve what are the, you know, really the separated path, of course, was a little hanging group with the, you know, safety, moral components. Um, but a lot of energy with that stakeholder working group in particular, really dialing in that purpose need, what it, what it started from with DOT's presentation to what it is today. Um, I mean, it's, it's one of the most impressive purpose and need statements I've worked on because of the collaboration with, you know, and that stakeholder working group is not a group of people that, um, is there, came in there to sing our praises. We purposely put together a group of people that are stakeholders, skin in the game, and, and did not all necessarily align on what needed to happen at the beginning. As we've worked through that, it's been really amazing to watch that one happen as, as we kind of all talk through the challenges out here and realities and, you know, just even you think about, if I put a barrier between two lanes, what is that, what, maintenance, you know, and? You know, it's just, it's been really, um, we've deliberately gone through that process with the Stakeholder Working Group and then the public outreach components as the project has developed in, in the phase. We didn't jump out with alternatives, we jumped out with purpose and why are we here, what problems we solve? And, and working through that, I think it's really really changed even on the project team's perspective on what we're doing. One of the key things that we had to decide was, do we design this for sixty-five mile an hour interstate standard design speed? Um, or do we design it to fifty-five mile an hour that it's currently focused at? And, uh, you know, and, and the associated footprint and safety aspects, all that. And, um, we landed at fifty-five miles an hour. That, that's the project team working through with the stakeholder group, that's, that's the responsible choice, you know, for this corridor, that's balancing all of those, those aspects. So it, it, it has been a really, really fascinating, cool process to work through. And Aaron's been part of that stakeholder working group as well. So it, it's, it's been a very robust evolution to, to get to this proposed action of four lane divided.
Uh, I know we're talking a lot, but one last thing to add that you reminded me of on the public side is, um, the public meetings that we had, a few rounds, they've all been in, whenever we do them, we do them in Anchorage, we do them in Indian and we do them in Girdwood. So we do three at a time whenever we do them. Um, and that's to try to get to all, with all those people. And then the other thing I wanted to mention was, um, the listening post. Do you know how many listening posts we've had?
Hmm, ten this year, yeah.
Ten this year. So we've set up these listening posts where we go out to, um, the Beluga Watch or.
Places that people are going to be who don't usually show up to your public.
The Indian picnic that was at the Fall Field, we've gone to the rock climbing gym to talk to the rock climbers, the rock climbers a couple times.
Set up outside REI, busy guys, just trying to catch those folks.
Just to say, hey, here's this project, can we talk to you about it? Do you have questions? Kind of that public, from the public outreach standpoint, it's been, it's significant. So, yeah, I just wanted to bring, bring that up as well when you were asking about the public.
Okay, uh, Graham, it looks like you have your hand up.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. Um, and I guess I, I'll try to ask one question at a time because I know multiple questions. Um, I think first preliminary question, are we, Aaron, I think I heard you say agenda-wide, are we hearing next more about the funding side of things from DOT or is that part of this conversation?
That'll be a part of this, that'll be once we're done asking the project team questions. So we'll need to move into that here pretty quickly since we're only in about a half hour left of the work session.
Great. Well, I think maybe to sort of synthesize, I think what I'm hearing from, you know, my colleagues on staff, and I think what I've, we've been hearing from the public is four lane divided road is not achieving the goals. So like appreciate how much public outreach you all have done and what you've heard, but I think that's not what we're hearing from our constituents as the goal for this road. Um, so I think there's a, maybe that's some of the questions about the survey, maybe a little disconnect in terms of like what we're hearing from folks and what you all heard in the public outreach process. Um, and I, I think sort of along those lines, well, yeah, it's, that's more of a statement than a question. Sorry for that. I, to maybe put a little bit of a question on it, I think, looks like we're sort of towards the end of the EA process. So are we as AMAT's going to be looking at sort of a take it or leave it decision on this design? Or, um, you know, if, if the EA is finished, are we locked into the sort of four lane divided highway design moving forward as we sequence out these projects? Or are we going to have a chance to come back and, um, get community input and look at alternatives down the line? I, I think where my concern is coming from is some of the conversation that happened with Scooter Avenue recently as part of that other Seward Highway program where we had, you know, a ten-year-old project, we wanted to change the intersection at Scooter. The public said, we don't want that anymore. And I think what came back was, well, we'd have to redo NEPA if we wanted to do a pedestrian facility there instead of an additional intersection. And I might be mixing up the details, I might not, but, um, we're worried about getting locked in long-term to a specific plan here if it is a twenty-year program. Sorry, I, you know, I said I was going to ask one question at a time and then I did not.
Yeah, that's all right. Um, I'll, I'll comment on that a little bit from the NEPA standpoint. The alternative that is selected by the DOT at the end of the NEPA process means that that's what they have authority to continue, advance into design and construction. So you are absolutely correct that if in ten years, uh, the conversation changes and something else is the right solution, the NEPA process would have to be repeated. So this, you know, the intent of the NEPA process is really to set the vision for the corridor um, holistically throughout that so that then you can move forward with design and construction. So this is, this is absolutely that time. Um, the draft EA is the next major opportunity for public comment, right? And so it's not done yet until we get to final EA. So there is still opportunity for public comment, et cetera. And, you know, I would just say from a public engagement standpoint, if, if you are hearing from the public that, that there's not support for this, that is different absolutely than what we're hearing. And we'd love to hear, you know, more about that or if there are people that we want to meet with. Um, we have been happily going to talk to anybody who wants to talk to the, us about this project. Uh, we've done probably twenty, thirty, forty, um, small group meetings out at community councils with special interest groups. Um, and I think that's, uh, yeah, if there, if we're missing something, we, we would love to know, we need to know. So, uh.
I'd love to know more, the disconnect there, for sure.
But I, I would encourage you to follow up with us afterwards so we can talk to those folks.
And I think big picture, yeah, you know, we're building this over ten, twenty years, right? I've worked on a few of those legacy projects. I had a big urban reconstruction project and we had dual time lanes in every intersection and, you know, it was started in the nineties, uh, where we had these big visions of what Fairbanks was going to be. And, you know, by the time we were getting closer to railway acquisition, construction, traffic analysis and some aspects had changed. That's a reeval process, that doesn't mean you have to completely redo your entirety, but as long as your purpose is the same, as long as your fundamental impacts are roughly the same, it's a revaluation process and it, and it's a continuous thing on these types of projects for sure that, you know, maybe someday, you know, by the time Potter Marsh is the last one and by the time we get there, the purpose and need isn't there to, to do this whole thing and all we're doing is bike cap. That's, those are things that happen over the life of these type of projects. Uh, but we, we have to set today what we, and not just what we, but what we, in coordination with the Stakeholder Working Group and the public process, see as the appropriate solution, given the information we have today in that, that EA, hopefully subsequent font.
Okay, Sean Holland, and then we'll probably need to do one more and then finish up. So Sean, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe just a thought and then, uh, uh, I guess maybe a question, but you know, I guess going back to that survey and then to Grant's statement about, um, him hearing from constituents that's, that's not a four lane. Um, I wonder like, how many people did we reach with that survey? I mean, I think it was a perfection, professionally conducted scientific survey. And, uh, you know, I feel like, I don't know, like anywhere in the state, you know, if you ask somebody from downtown about a project on the Seward Highway that they never drive on, they're certainly going to have a different perspective than someone that lives in Girdwood and drives it every day or someone that lives on the Keen Eye and, and so, and I think it's just kind of, uh, um, all of our surveys are, are biased to some extent depending on, you know, if you ask me about whether we should build another interchange in Fairbanks or build a project in Anchorage, I'm not going to choose Fairbanks, you know? Um, so anyway, I guess that's my thought, but maybe a little bit more explanation on your, um, survey, how many people you reached and, and how you chose your, uh, your, uh, the people that you surveyed.
Yeah, so, so we hired a third-party firm that specializes in public research because that's not something that I'm equipped to do, right? I can gather feedback from the people that show up at the meetings, uh, but we hired, we hired a, a third party. Um, they called five hundred people, but they, they called until they got five hundred responses. Um, and they, you know, gave us advice too on the complexity of the client, of the questions that we were going to be asking, right? Because we couldn't, we couldn't, um, sit down and give people a thirty-minute briefing on the project uh, before we talked to them, right? This was just like, based on what you know right now, we want you to answer some questions about driving the highway and what you feel the, the safety concerns are and how you, if you think this project is important or not.
Uh, yeah, listen to Brad, mainly seven, we'll be done. So we've got to make it quick.
Um, so there was the comments about different design speed, I really appreciate that. And I'm curious, if you did a sixty-five mile an hour, like how much more would it cost? How much are you saving by doing thirty-five? This isn't something I have to answer right now. Um, and how much more might you save if you did a forty-five? Just, I'm just curious to see if you've thought about that. Don't have to answer it, it's just something that's on my mind that could be a speaking point when people look at the cost because immediately the first thing that I think of a four lane divided is our sixty-five mile an hour road. So, so knowing that is really helpful. The other thing was, um, what additional snow maintenance, staffing and resources will be needed to maintain the larger facility? And my hope is the answer might be it actually needs less because it's being designed in a way that is actually easier to maintain. But if it's going to require more, please, please, please identify that and make it clear that if this is the priority to do, that it's not taking more very, very scarce DOT resources out of the city and the heart of Anchorage to do this facility.
So I don't have an exact answer to your first question, but.
I don't need the answers now because we are short on time.
No, that's fair. I was just going to say, a lot of the driver of the cost, you know, between sixty-five and fifty-five, you're flattening curves a little bit more versus, um, versus some, some of the tight curves, there's like six really tight curves out there. Um, I think the driver of your cost has to do with your rock excavation and your cut and that might happen either way, whether you're fifty-five or sixty-five.
Right.
Um, I think that there is some savings for sure, um, but I don't think it's the major driver of just changing those curves. Uh, on your second question, Burrell, um, Nickerson? Yeah, kind of his last name. He sits on our Stakeholder Working Group and leads the maintenance operations group at DOT. So he's been in all those Stakeholder Working Group meetings. Um, we've had a few conversations, one-on-ones with the maintenance group to understand their concerns. Um, it is actually interesting there, they do have some techniques to address, um, you know, when you address one lane, a lot of times you plow it and then you have a second effort that comes through to get it over the guardrail and guardrail areas. They do have some techniques that can plow two lanes at once and you're still taking a second run to get it over the guardrail. So in some ways, that's sort of the same effort, you're making two passes. Um, so, uh, but he's been part of that discussion the whole time throughout the, throughout the project to make sure he's aware of what, what we, the different ideas we're talking about.
It would be great if in the report it was clear that this is the additional maintenance, that funding that needs to be included. Um, the last item is the view of turning it on, going to be blocked? Is it going to be designed in a way that you can still enjoy that and not be driving one of the sides of the freeway and looking at a wall on one side and, you know? And then the last one, some of the individual projects, I'd be curious to see, do you know how the phasing of this program is? To see what individual projects, we're out of time, I don't necessarily need to answer now because I don't want to leave some questions.
Yeah, me to breathe.
Um, actually, Brad, you've already asked a lot of the questions that I had, um, even earlier. I just wanted to echo his questions about, I know, not two-point-four billion, but one-point-three billion is still a very large number, especially when we have so many fatalities in town in comparison to this stretch of road. So just echoing what he said earlier about the allocation of, of funding, um, here in town versus out on the Seward. Um, and then also I was, I was curious about if you had looked at lowering the speed limit to forty-five, since it is a scenic highway, I believe, um, and maybe addressing the safety issues, um, in that manner instead of keeping it at fifty-five or sixty-five, um, and making all of those adjustments to keep the high speeds. Um, again, you don't have to answer right now, I think, I'd just like to know that information at some point in the future. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry to cut it off quick. Okay, so let's move into the funding piece. So we did see that there is a cost increase, uh, it's a little different than originally, originally shown in the STIP. The STIP is very confusing and impossible to find anything in, so thank you for providing that information, it's different greatly. Um, so if DOT has an opportunity to do a quick, um, update for the committee members on how this cost increase will be handled. So the current cost in the MTP for the portion within the AMAT's boundary is ninety million. I believe you guys said it was going to go to two, two-twenty-two, it's in the presentation, six sixteen?
Three sixteen was the new.
Well, with the.
Like two eighty or something.
Boundary, because that's, so two-sixty-six, okay. So from ninety million to two-sixty-six, so if DOT could kind of that cost chain? And if there are going to be impacts to the MTP or is additional funding going to be brought online? What is your guys' expectations?
Uh, this, this Sean Holland, I mean, I think I can speak to that, I already kind of mentioned it before, Aaron. I, I found it very easy to find in the stiff amendment. But, uh, that, uh, it's need ID one-two-six-four-one has a table that shows all the different projects that would fall out of this project along with the, uh, corresponding, uh, start and finish points, uh, in, uh, as far as the mile points go, mileposts. Um, I don't know what other information to provide besides that.
That item is only the parent and child or the, the parent project. There is also the child projects that are going to do the construction piece of it. And if you look at the person of this tip that was submitted to FHWA, the cost is actually four-hundred-and-sixteen million. So there's a difference and I assume that the version that was final approved is different than the version that was submitted to FHWA. So I assumed we go with your guys' cost that is in the thing. And I actually just checked the STIP that's available online right now. It's not the easiest to find, um, and it, I couldn't actually find.
Um, yeah, and I don't, I don't think we should change our, uh, I would recommend that we don't change that interpretation that we have in the MTP that, um, we just carry that whatever's within the boundary of AMAT's within the MTP. And I got, so I'm, I'm kind of missing the ask a little bit, I guess, but I don't, not sure I understand.
You guys have shown the cost is not ninety million for the portion within the AMAT's boundary anymore. It is increased and it's been a significant increase. If we're like a million or two, it's probably, okay, that's inflation. But this is a doubling, almost maybe even triple it, about tripling of the project cost within the AMAT's boundary, I'm talking about the rest of the project. So we have here, how is that cost increase going to be paid for over the life of the MTP?
Um, well, I think, uh, Chris spoke to why that, the, uh, the reasons behind the cost. Um, well, I think, uh, Chris spoke to why that, the reasons behind the cost increase. Um, but he also spoke to, you know, how to use and did the Seward Highway, uh, Rabbit or 36 to Rabbit Creek or Rabbit Creek to 36 is an example. And none of those projects came out of the AMATs allocation. They came out of the STIP for NHS funds. This will be the same. I, I can't think of a major project that we've built on the Seward or Glen within an AMATs boundary ever that we've come out of the AMATs allocation that comes out of the STIP, um, NHS funds.
So Aaron, I think the simple answer to your question is it would be additional revenue in the MTP above and beyond your current estimate.
That's what we need to know. Thank you for providing that. And so that would be something for the committee members to think about as they're just directing staff. Um, and so if that information can be provided just in writing, that would be helpful. So we can document it. We also have a recording here about that. So we understand where it's coming from. It helps with fiscal constraint to know, oh, it's not AMATs funding. It's not the funding we currently show in the fiscally constrained MTP. The STIP is fiscally constrained. How are you guys gonna find that funding in all of our fiscally constrained documents? You're gonna bring additional funding that historically hasn't been seen in the AMATs area to help pay for that cost increase? Is what I'm understanding. Is that correct?
Yes, and we can certainly provide.
Yeah.
With the consistent that matches what our current.
Great. I just had a bunch of questions to the committee members, so thank you.
Yeah, that's similar to every major project we've built in the Glen or Seward corridor that I'm aware of. So, yeah.
I have a related question. Do we know how, like, if we could have at the meeting as well the, the total amount of NHS funds that are currently assumed? Um, because there are non-AMATs allocated funds that the MTP assumes, right? And uses for projects in the AMATs area.
So you'd like the total cost for NHS funding within the MTP.
That was, I would, it'd be interesting to know that as part of this conversation because part of the question might be, is that funding still, is, are we still having to guarantee that that funding is still staying in these projects that are in the MTP? And it's not reallocating NHS funding away from those towards this? Cause that's still something that's affecting the MTP. That makes sense.
Yeah, that's kind of the question is with the cost increase, are you gonna be reallocating from the existing MTP fiscal analysis and say, okay, we're gonna take away from the projects that are in there and put it towards this? Or are you gonna bring more on top of it and nothing will be impacting the ones already in the MTP? And that's what we need from DOT to understand.
And specifically the NHS ones.
Yes.
Those are our NHS ones in the MTP.
Well, we list, we don't, we do show up by that, but we show up by like AMATs funding, DOT funding, which includes more than NHS funding because there's a variety of funding sources. There are a variety of funding sources that can come online to this project and we just kind of need to know what that is. Because we are saying to FHWA, our MTP is fiscally constrained with this cost increase and here's how it's gonna be done based on input from DOT. And that the committees support that assumption and we're still fiscal constrained. Okay, um, sorry, Grant, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, um, curious if, if folks from DOT can share a little more about like why it's additional or how it's additional. I'm obviously not an expert on NHS funding, but, um, how is it the case that we're accessing new money and what sort of like, is it a specific program? Are there requirements on that program? We'd be curious to sort of learn more about the additional pot of money.
So this isn't an additional pot of money. It's a, it's a allocation, we call it formula funds. That is the funds allocated to each state for national highway system projects. So National Highway Performance Program is the fund source and it can only be used on NHS routes. So like the parks, the sewer, the Glen, um, there's, there's various other ones. Um, and so, so that's an allocation we get DOT every year from federal highways. And we allocate that across our various NHS assets. In the STIP, you'll see the NHS fund source tied to all kinds of projects, highway projects, Dalton Island projects, Seward Highway. Uh, in, because this project is in, part of the project is in your metropolitan planning area boundary, we have to give Aaron, we have to show him that our investment in our NHS system is in addition to all the other investments that he has to keep track of for his fiscal constraint in his MTP and then ultimately in the TIP for the actual project programming. Uh, so, so it's not a, it's not a new funding source. It's not a funding source that AMATs is able to program themselves. It's a, it's a DOT fund source for the NHS and so we're responsible for programming that money across our various NHS assets. And so here we're choosing to invest 266 million of that within your MPA.
That's extremely useful. Thank you. Um, Sean, I should let you go.
Oh, I don't mean to interrupt you, Graham, but I was just gonna interject that it could be extra money. I mean, Chris has already, has mentioned that we've already applied for discretionary grants in that corridor and we'll continue to apply for those grants. And if we're successful, then that's gonna offset NHS money that we can use elsewhere. I mean, we could choose to bond part of that, uh, project. We could choose to borrow that money. There's, there's multiple ways that we could create additional funds beyond our normal program to let us build this project. You know, I, um, I don't think we're there yet to be able to make those decisions because again, we're looking at a, a program that's, uh, that could be a decade or more long. Um, but yeah, I just wanted to add that piece that they're, uh, Lawrence, right, I'm not disagreeing with her, but I'm also saying that there's also potential for additional money.
That's really helpful. I guess I'd be curious of sort of follow on to that, um, that a sense of the full list of NHS routes in Anchorage. Uh, and, uh, yeah, just sort of a sense that might give a clearer sense of the trade offs there.
Yeah, we have that mapping is all available online. You just Google Alaska NHS routes. There's a, there's a GIS site. All that stuff.
I could get it said to the committee members.
But, but again, it's important to remember this is, this is DOT's money to program. You know, so we're choosing to invest this on this project, the MPA. Um, but we also are investing it in other communities on other highways, uh, you know, as, so it, for us, it is tied to this specific project.
So a question that I have is with this being the last remaining safety corridor that, that exists right now, is that maybe one of the justifications that you might give to Northern Region South Coast Region as to why more money is getting funneled into Anchorage? Cause I assume that by bringing more money that Anchorage hasn't traditionally seen, which is the discussion we're having. And this coming out of what Northern Region and other places might, might be getting. So are those other regions aware of how much funds they might have traditionally seen now getting funneled to Anchorage? And is the safety corridor element kind of part of that? Or how do you like, how do you justify that to the others? So that they don't start to kind of take back, you know, push back on that and then we're, we're kind of in this difficult, you know, when a rock and, and, uh, a water body.
Yeah, so, so South Coast Region really doesn't have much NHS routes. So they're a fairly minor player in that pot of money. It is largely northern, central. And that's where that conversation about bringing this project into manageable annual impacts to the STIP place. And it's not just balancing it across communities, but it's also balancing it across regions. The regions develop their plan of, of here's what we have on the books. Here's what we think we can deliver in northern. It's roughly $300 million a year is kind of the target for, for contractor payments that we've sort of figured out our contracting community can handle, we can manage. And, and this doesn't take away from that ability to deliver their reliable program for the contractors. Maybe it means a little less NHS, you know, but there's a lot of funding sources that we deal with. So, so we are, that's, that's the big juggling act that we're doing at a statewide level of, you know, trying to distribute, you know, the pain across as equally as we can. I always, always say if everybody's a little unhappy, we probably got it right. Um, so I think everyone's probably gonna be a little unhappy if I got it pretty close.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, um, yes, I think Graham was saying that it looks like many of the DOT roads in Anchorage are NHS, including Tudor AC 56. I believe, yes, a lot of the principal arterials that are in Anchorage are DOT owned and they do fall in the NHS. That was part of the change that happened with MAP 21 in October of, oh goodness, forever ago, maybe also old segment. Um, but back in the day, back in the old days, anything that was listed as a principal arterial was added to the NHS as part of the extended NHS, I believe was what it was called. So that's why a lot of our principal arterials in Anchorage are part of the NHS.
That brings up the question of, is this money competing for pavement preservation?
It does pay for some pavement preservation, right? It's this, this pot of money. If you look in the STIP, you'll see it distributed across a lot of programs and projects. So some of it is, is pavement preservation projects, some of it's rehab pre-construction projects. Um, there's another pot of money that can be used very flexibly. NHS would be very specific to NHS. There's a STBG flex money that can be used basically on anything. Um, that also gets leveraged for those PM programs as well as some of our oral system stuff. So again, like anything, it's a balancing act, um, you know, and we're trying to do our best to, you know, solve as much as we can with limited resources that we have. You know, the rough, I think if the ABC meeting had a $1.1 billion obligations across all funding sources, all modes, you know, this year, you hear a billion dollars, it doesn't sound like that limited pool, but it, it doesn't go as far as you think it should. That's for sure.
Thanks. I know that we hear a lot about potholes all over town and, or pavement condition. So I'd be really hesitant, you know, if that was the survey question. Should you rather that we spend a billion dollars on the Seward Seward Highway or fix all of the pavement issues around town? You'd get a very different response probably on the survey.
And a lot of those roads may not be eligible for NHS. Generally do a better job on our pavement conditions on the NHS as well. Except because of their commerce and people get.
Sure.
Okay, everybody, we've got about five minutes left. Does anybody have any other questions for the project team or DOT or AMAT staff?
Just a, a really quick request. Um, you were saying, um, something about the purpose and need statement? And I was just curious if we've seen that yet, um, or if you, if that's available.
That would be on the website, right?
Is it on the website?
Yeah.
Should see.
Great.
It's, it's continually evolving. I'm trying to think. It's, what I showed on there is pretty current. I don't know if the website's been updated even at this point.
So that's what the, the name of it.
Feedback and discussions with the stakeholders. Uh, so I don't know the version that's on there right now, but it's been pretty similar to that, um, been that way for a while. There was a big change we made. It was probably nine months ago. So I bet you.
Okay.
See what's up.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? We can make the presentation available to you all as well. So you can review it again in case you have any other questions, feedback you would like to provide to the project team. Um, I do wanna say thank you. Uh, oh, go ahead.
Good question. Something that I'm curious about is you pointed out that the Tugash State Park had that, um, extension, that boundary that goes like across and then down into the water. Just, just wondering the relevance of that point that was made? If there's anything that can be shared about something, how that affects or impacts the project?
It does definitely impact the project. You know, as you go through, um, some of the environmental process and the laws related around, uh, park impacts. Uh, one of the things we do is look at alternatives to avoid parks. That's a pretty big law we follow through the NIPA process. And for instance, if the park never went on the other side of the roadway, there would be a lot of drivers to say, we're gonna go everything into the water. Now, if you go into the water completely, now you're doing a ton of impact to wetlands in the US and you have to show the Corvage heirs that you minimize impacts to wetlands. So you have these kind of competing laws that start to work against each other. Um, but the fact that the park is also on the water side, we're not minimizing impacts to the park to move towards the water. We're actually impacting the park whether we go to the water or to the mountainside. And so, um, what it's kind of driven us to do on the project is really look at the impacts, um, uh, topography wise, I guess I would say, and in simple terms. In Indian and Bird, uh, there's little topography. We actually have a fair amount of right of way. There are a lot of whitening on existing. Go north of Indian, significant topography. We're starting to push into the water just because you've got these 3,000 foot slopes, right? Um, at Rainbow, you gotta flatten the curves. You gotta go into the water a little bit. You have no choice. Um, north of McHugh, the topography lessens a lot. Um, and we can start to go into the mountainside a little bit more. We're not having to build as much in railroad. We're not having the wetland impacts. The wetland, minimizing your impacts to wetlands starts to drive you into the mountainsides. And so as we've been balancing, looking at right, left, center, you know, these different things control where you end up going with the roadway. Um, and if, and so I'm reiterating, but if the park wasn't on the water side, those, uh, under 4F of NIPA, it would really, it would drive you to minimize impacts of the park and it would be pushing away more impacts probably on the water side.
Thank you.
So it's, it's, it's significant.
Yeah, I just wondered because it's like you pointed out, I was like, hmm, there's something there that I wanted to know more about.
Stents.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Uh, Taylor has one and then we'll need to wrap up.
So do we, is there a DSR, a draft DSR?
Usually a design study report is done, uh, in line with the final design. And so we don't have a design study report.
You have a draft of it.
Uh, no, don't have a draft design center report. We have some design. Um, we have, we have a traffic and safety report we've been developing in support of the environmental document. I guess on the design side, um, we have, um, footprints, um, that we've modeled. You know, we've modeled these different concepts that come up with, uh, design effort in support of the environmental document.
Were you talking about though, the, the DSR that is required within the CSA CSS process?
Um, I, my understanding was the DSR and environmental document would happen kind of in harmony with one another, but I could be mistaken and.
It's a, it's a, it's a good question. There is a MUNI DSR and DOT DSR.
Okay.
Maybe I spoke.
And on a big K like this, um, there's a lot of, there's a lot of work done before you pick sort of what the, that final thing is gonna look like. We've just gotten to the point of saying, this is, you know, the four lane divided highway is the proposed action. So a lot of the components of the DSR are done, right? Traffic and safety analysis. Uh, but it's not in the, you know, the DOT format. Uh, a lot of, a lot of projects, we actually don't write the DSR until after the environmental document is done. That's sort of, the regions are a little different in that depending on, you know, what staple would we have and, and when, when they need that document. Really that document ultimately ends up primarily like planning approval and, and those sorts of things more than what DOT.
As a follow on, was it confirmed that this project was not gonna officially follow the CSS process?
No, we are planning to follow the CSS process and we did the first step, uh.
The concept?
The concept report already. And then we're planning to do the next step, uh, at the draft EA point where we would, um, advance it through. And that was confirmed with, um, Elizabeth Appleby.
Oh, good.
And planning that that was the right approach because there was a little bit of uncertainty that that's, that's the plan. So that would be happening around at the same time as the draft EA.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Awesome. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call it there, everybody. It is 4:32. Thank you so much for everybody joining. Thank you very much for the project team coming out and providing and helping me give more information to the committees. Um, thank you Lauren for coming and for us and the other DOT staff. We will have this recorded, so we will provide it to the committee members who are unable to attend today. We'll also provide the, uh, presentation so you can review it and we will see everybody tomorrow for the TAC video. Thank you.
Right, thanks, Aaron.